Seven o'clock. Wasn't sure where that voice was coming from. Then, yes, roll call please.
Jack Sutherland.
Here.
Terry Kelly.
Here.
Mary Ann Pollak.
Here.
Linda Linebaugh.
Here.
Rick Frida.
Here.
Okay, I think everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes from January the 11th. Is there any corrections or additions that need to be made to the minutes at this point? Okay, then I say the minutes are accepted as they were printed out. Roll call please.
Terry Kelly.
Yes.
Mary Ann Pollak.
Yes.
Linda Linebaugh.
Yes.
Rick Frida.
Yes.
Jack Sutherland.
Yes. Okay, we have a couple of new members on our board. So I would like to take this opportunity to ask each one of them to introduce themselves at this point and maybe a little bit of a background.
All right, I will start. My name is Linda Linebaugh. I've been in Columbia for, oh goodness, fifteen years maybe. It's been a long time. I do have two kids that go to the Columbia School District and I'm excited to get started on the board. Thank you.
I am Rick Frida. I've been in Columbia living for the last five years but have been working for Comco down the street on Railroad Street. I had forty-four years in there this past November. We are trying to do some things in town here. We just bought the theater and we've got a couple other buildings that we're working on. Excited to be a part of this community and want to make sure that it grows and grows correctly.
On behalf of myself, I would like to welcome you and thank you for your contribution to our board. Okay, under new business, John, okay, I'm gonna butcher this. Oguzali, okay, thank you so much. Has asked for a variance for a building he wants to put on his property. So sir, if you would like to come up to the podium and give us a brief description of what you're wanting to do and why the size of the building.
The building is gonna be a thirty wide by fifty long by approximately fourteen to sixteen foot sidewalls with a fourteen by fourteen garage door. To, to, it's gonna be mainly for storage and working on my, a truck and potentially RV storage also.
All right, is there any questions from the board that you might have?
Not at this time.
All right, is anybody in the audience wish to come up and say anything at this point? Please state your name from the records, please.
Eloise Arkwright and I'm at ten eighteen Fairfield School Road. They're right behind me at the, at the lake property. I just had the question as to where the building was going since my property butts up next to his. So I wondered where the building would be.
I don't know my, my front neighbor's last name, but her, her first name is Barbie that I'm sure these guys know. It's gonna go directly right behind Barbie's house. It's gonna, so when you're going down my driveway, it'll be to my right.
Okay.
Closer to Jacob's house.
Okay. Ma'am, does that answer your question? Do you have any further questions you would like at this point? Okay.
Good evening, I'm Jacob Sevek, resident at eleven hundred Square. Fairfield School Road, I must said square feet. The property, we share about five hundred feet of adjoining property. This building would be, we'd be directly attached to that property, that part of the property that he's building. I, for one, I'm not against property rights and John and us have been great neighbors since they've been there. So this is nothing against the necessary building or them. This is a rainfall issue. This is a water issue.
Okay.
The property, our, our property is the ten seventy-six, eleven hundred, which is Barbie McKim's and mine. And then John's is the other one. Is a, that whole area is a very low area. And then the property that's one south of us is also, is even a lower one, but they have the storm drain in front of their home. We get an exorbitant amount of runoff and just water that pools because it is a low area. He would have to elevate that part of the property, that southwest corner, to get it up to grade that he would need for egress into it from the driveway, I would imagine, which would then also create now a slope that would also be going south and west on Barbie and I's directional property. The problem is.
Didn't the city do a lot of drainage work out there about ten years ago?
No.
Exactly.
Now, water will drain, but it may not be visible.
Could you also show the picture to Mr. Meyer? Thank you.
The issue is that on a fifteen hundred square foot building or roof that you would have, it dispenses roughly thirty-nine thousand two hundred fifty gallons of water that'd be displaced based on the average rainfall in Columbia of approximately forty-two inches. To give you perspective, that's an eighteen by thirty-six by eight foot pool that would hold almost thirty-nine thousand gallons of water. Unfortunately, that water's gotta go somewhere. Now, if there is drainage in the plans and the engineering, which I mean, we have not seen any of the plans. So if there are the plans, then maybe I'm speaking out of turn and don't know. But without a proper plan to account for this extra water and where it's going to go, be, there is a due diligence by engineering, the board, and my neighbors to make sure that that water's addressed, that it doesn't become our burden because there's my Barbie's property that be the east end of her property is where her septic and leach fields are. Mine are in the backyard. We already have enough water coming off of runoff from other areas to create enough issues. We don't need displacement off of the building. If the water issues are addressed and there's adequate drainage accounted for, for displacement, then by all means, I'm not gonna sit here and oppose because I don't, I don't buy into that I believe that, you know, you own the property, you should be able to do things within reason. That is all.
My house sits in the middle. So I have water from Fairfield Road that comes across my yard. The water from Barbie's, from all, all the houses from, all these people that are here in front of me, I have all their water. Their yards are all tapered towards my pond. And in that section of, that section of property where I wanna build the garage, there are literally two drains over there that are attached to my pond. So I mean, as far as, I mean, I can't correct water when they, when I'm getting it from all sides because I, I live lower than these guys. So all their water runs to me.
Okay.
And I, in where I am putting this, the, the pole building, there is, there are two drains already on that side of the road that go into my pond. Unfortunately, we did have a, we did have a wet, a wet spring.
Yeah.
You know, we did have a lot of rain.
Yes.
And my pond can only handle so much. These guys know that pond overflows and it, and there's, I got no, I, I can't do nothing with any extra water. And the only thing that I can do is put rain gutters up and pipe them into them drains. But as far as that water, that, that water's been there. You know.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions that they might wanna present at this time?
Do you have plans with gutters to, to hook up into those drains right now? Is that a part of the plan?
Well, it, it wasn't, but I mean, if, 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 I, I don't see what their problem is because his property is wet in the middle of July or August. His property is still soaking wet. He gets stuck in his, he can't even cut his grass. So I, I don't know where, where the water is coming on, on his side. But I don't have a problem. If it costs me a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars, it's, it's, it's not a lot of money. If it, if it's gonna put him at ease, I'll, I'll have gutters put on it. I mean, I, and I could pipe them into the drain. But like I said, once that drain gets filled, the pond gets filled, the, the, the water's just gonna back up like it did right there. But that picture.
Do you have an overflow in your pond that goes anywhere?
No, no, because I'm down in a ravine. I, I, I'm down. I mean, that water, when that, when that pond overflows, it, it, it floods out the back corner of my yard.
The only thing I would say, you know, is that obviously the board has the right to ask any questions that you want to ask. Everybody has the right. The way this basically gets here, just so everybody is clear on that, this isn't really an appeal. It is an application for a variance, which means that the zoning inspector in this case, deputy zoning inspector has said no. And I think you obviously should hear from him as to why he's saying no for this before you make any type of decision. As far as the decision, that little memo basically states, and Terry, you've been through these things. You can do it tonight, but you don't have to do that tonight. That's the only thing I'd like to make sure you're all aware.
Okay.
Especially the two new members.
And, okay, Bryce, would you, you were the one that looked at this and, okay, could you give us your opinion or your thoughts on this, please?
So summary of events on March seventeen.
Ruth, would you have the microphone, please? Oh, he's got one.
Couldn't see it.
On March seventeenth, August Serone, our, my predecessor and I met with the Oguzalies on their property at a ten sixty-four Fairfield School Road to view the proposed site for an accessory building. I'm very thankful it's much warmer today than what it was that day. August originally thought that this would be a conditional zoning application. So the Oguzalies applied for such on March seventeenth. Once I assumed the role of deputy zoning inspector, city manager Lance Willard and I determined with municipal attorney Hudson that the proposed building is not compliant with section twelve sixty dot nineteen of the city ordinances because the proposed building is fifteen hundred square feet while the maximum allowed square footage in city code is eight hundred and thirty-two square feet. As a result, to obtain a zoning permit and a building permit was denied and the Oguzalies were notified of such denial and offered the opportunity to request a variance through the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Oguzalies properly applied for a variance, including a fee of sixty-five dollars associated with the application. And on May second, a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting was scheduled for tonight at seven o'clock PM where a public hearing would be held. Fifteen neighbors and the property owners were all notified by certified mail the opportunity to appear before the Board of Zoning Appeals tonight. So I appreciate all of you being here as board members and everyone here from the public as well. But the main reason for the denial is in code, we allow eight hundred and thirty-two square feet. This building is proposed to be fifteen hundred square feet.
Well, it seems like right now the water seems to be an issue with, with your neighbors and so forth. Has anything been addressed to this, to the city about it to see if there's something can be done?
I am down in a gully. Jacob knows that. All my neighbors know that. They know I'm down in a gully. You know, even the houses that are on Fairfield Road and the houses on Fairfield School Road, everything runs to me. Everything runs to me. It, it, I got no way to, so it, it, it don't matter. That water's gonna be there. That water's gonna be there whether there's a fifteen hundred square foot building there or not. You know, if my pond gets filled, I, I can't drain no more water. It does, it, it's got nowhere to go.
Understandable.
You know, it's, you know, I, I, I don't know. I, I can't control, I can't control God, you know, with the rain. And the best thing that I could do is put up rain gutters. Or ask the neighbors to keep the water on their side. You know, if you can do that, I appreciate it. I love it too.
Now, sir, you were saying, you were showing us pictures here. Is there, when you get this, do you notice any way that, or where it's coming from? Or is it just, this ground just gets saturated? What, what?
I've lived at eleven hundred for thirteen years and there are some, when we get a good winter, a normal breeze, and it tends not to be as big of an issue for whatever reason. But when it's a dry or a warmer winter and that water sits there, and like as John said, we're all low and, and no one's arguing that. I understand that. I just know that I don't wanna become lower and have more water pushed over. And we get runoff from Fairfield Avenue that comes, comes downhill because they're higher. So runoff and a lot of it's just water underground. You could go to my house. I got stuck Sunday twice in two minutes, three minutes, almost three times. And it'd been nice. It had been warm in three different areas of my yard. That's not to, I'm not here to complain about that. It's, I know it is what it is and I, and I, I've dealt with it. But when we get the consistent rains and those heavy, those heavier rains in the ground, the water tables can't drop in our area because there's nowhere for it to go. From John's house, it goes, he's got a drain on the east of his, not the east, I'm sorry, the north of his pond that goes somewhere. I don't know where. Up to another, to go somewhere.
Okay.
And then there's a, on one property that's west of me, it has a set of three or four foot culvert that's a storm drain. And this year we're getting, there, yeah, the city is coming down and redoing the, or through a grant, doing Fairfield School Road and we're getting the, the street part handled, but that's also tends to, is a little bit, it's not all, it goes downhill, but it doesn't go downhill to the street. It goes downhill to our, our backyards and would be his front yard. There's just no, it's not a matter of, you know, is it rolling off of one property to the other? It's rolling and yeah, it, it kind of whole convenes there. And those are three, three, that's a low corner of the three properties, unfortunately. And as I said, I mean, if we can, if there can be something figured out with water, by all means. But that's just where we're, you know, where I'm at. And I can't, you know, I can only say that my other neighbor, what, she's for property rights, but she's a little worried about the water too. But she's not here to say that for herself.
I get some questions. Why do you need the additional size?
Well, just, just my truck alone is thirty-five feet long. So when I pull my truck in there to work on it, I wanna be able to pull it up so I can roll the hood. So once I roll the hood, I'm probably gonna be almost forty feet long. So it'll give me five feet from the back into the front so I can at least walk around. And not only that, an RV is around forty-five feet long for storage. And again, I can't control the water. The water's gonna.
I'm not concerned with the water.
I know, I know. I, I don't know why, why they're so concerned about it because it, it's, it's never been an issue before as long as it was on my property. You know, as long as it wasn't on theirs, they were okay with it. But now that it's, you know, something's good, he, he's right. That is gonna be built up. He's absolutely right. But it's not like I'm not, I'm not gonna take the drains out of there. Like I said, it's, you know, this, for the three, three and a half years, I never was told about the water because it didn't affect them. It was, it wasn't, three and a half years.
Okay. Now, these, these drains that you're talking about, where you wanna put this building, are they like a culvert to, to catch it to water or?
Yes, it is. The, the previous owner had them installed.
Like a catch basin?
That's exactly what they are. And not only that, the, the girl Barbie, the girl, the, the, it's gonna be right behind, behind her house, she actually has her, 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 her rain gutters run right into one of them, catch basins.
Okay.
And if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think Credit Carol also have a, a drain pipe from their house ran four or five hundred feet down to the pond. We couldn't find it, but that's what we're assuming.
Okay, okay.
Like I said, it, it seemed like nobody ever told me about the water before for the last three and a half years, you know, because it wasn't their concern. Because it, it, it all puddled up down on my property. And once the pond got filled, the water's gonna, you know, the, the water can only go so high.
Right, right. If whatever you could do to defer the water coming off the, off of the roof, you know, with the gutters or even a small swale back.
Sure, I, like I said, I don't, I don't mind putting up rain, rain gutters and getting them piped into the ground to go to that, to go to the the catch basin. But again, like I said, you know, like, I can't, I can't tell them to keep the water on my own property.
No, no, no.
You know, it's, it, 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 it all runs to me.
Right.
I, I'm getting it from northeast, south and west.
So you're, where you wanna put this, your garage, is also floods in that area?
It does flood in that area, yes. Well, when the pond, when the pond fills up. But I mean, it, it, that, that picture he has there, it, it's unusual because it usually doesn't fill up that bad. This is the, probably the, the worst year that I've seen that, that fill up with water like that.
Okay.
You know, but we, we did have a significant amount of rain this year.
Yes, we have. We've had a wet. Mark, I have a question for you. Could we do like, maybe like a meeting? Kind of discuss this a little further in private or, or how do you?
We do an executive.
You can, you can probably do an executive session to discuss this or you can basically take it under advisement and think it over.
Okay.
And issue a written, yeah, a written decision.
Okay. So we could table the issue for now until we discuss this a little further with the, with the water issue at this point?
You could. I mean, from what I can hear, you've heard about a concern that you knew nothing about
Right.
when you came in this evening. And, you know, possibly, to be fair to everyone, you should further consider that. And possibly the applicant, Mr. Oguzali, should look into that a little bit more.
What would you like me to look into?
Well, that would be, I'm not making the decision. Sorry, I'm just here to advise. So if the board wants any more detail on that, you could certainly request that.
Okay.
Mark, I remember in the back of my mind, maybe ten years ago, a lot of discussion about the flooding in that area. It was quite a while ago. I, I can't remember any resolution on it.
I don't know if anything was done. I was sitting here and since I've been here so long, I can probably tell you the history of his lot. Actually, I looked at that house, almost bought the house you're in over twenty years ago. But I think a friend of mine developed that. And everything you've heard about the water is correct. It's a low lying and Fairfield School Road gets the water from Fairfield Avenue and always has. I don't know if any work was ever done out there to solve that. I don't recall.
I talked to Rick.
There might have been.
Best, a Rick Burke. And he mentioned that they had done something out here. But I don't know why.
Well, that, yeah, and I can't, I can't recall what, if anything, was done.
I remember the discussion about it, but that, that's about it.
Yeah. Well, remember, they did a project, actually was, I was on an equalization board when the sewer went out Fairfield Avenue. Because that was done and that's now probably fifteen, twenty years ago.
Yeah.
So there was a sewer equalization because basically there was an assessment done on everybody on Fairfield, Fairfield Avenue. Now, I don't know if that was, if there was anything done with the water on Fairfield School Road at that time. I don't recall.
I don't know if the neighbors could recollect anything with done as far as drainage for water.
I think there's a eighty-three and I don't recall anything done for the water on Fairfield School Road.
Well, like I said, the, this is somewhat of an issue.
Me and my wife are small business owners.
Yes.
And you, I, I, I just, I, I just, I mean, if I have to sell the house and go out, out of the, the, the township, look for township property, I'm more than happy to. I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make a big stink about it. You know, it's, you know, I, I don't wanna upset the neighbors. But I mean, it really, I'll be honest with you, i- if it's an issue, I could put my house up for sale. Because there, you know, I, I, I don't need, I, I don't need the aggravation. I, I mean, it, it's in, like I said, and I'm not looking to upset the neighbors in, in any way. But I, I, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do what's right for, for me and my business. So if the town of Columbia doesn't appreciate it, then, then like I said, I could always, I, I could always move on. I mean, I, I pay my taxes just like everybody else, you know. And, and, believe me, I, I, I get hit pretty hard. But, um, like I said, I, I'm not looking to upset the neighbors. So I mean, if it's a problem, I, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know right now that, yeah, I, I could just, we could just forget it. And, and I, I really have no problem.
I, I, I think that's, right now it seems to be coming from that there's a problem out there that I.
That's like me telling them to keep the water on their property. You know, I, I, I can't fix it.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
That I'm seeing is the river, the water. It's the, the size of the building.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what we're.
Which is gonna create a more of a problem.
But you wanna know, I could go within a half a mile of my house and, and, and give you ten addresses that people have a garage that's bigger than fifteen hundred square feet. Now, I even brought this up with August and he said that most likely they might be, they might have been built before the code. He says he thinks, but they look pretty new to me. But I'm just saying, within, probably within a half a mile, I could probably have ten addresses, you know, with buildings that are, that, that are pretty significant. And I'm not looking for it. I mean, like I said, I mean, thirty by fifty really is not a big building. Trust me, it's now.
I, I think that is what, what the board is looking at is the fact is the amount of, you have a funnel from the, from your roof and adding to the situation that's there.
Right. Well, where would the water go if there wasn't a building there? I, I, I mean, Jacob seemed to have a lot of answers and, and everything. Where would the water go if there was no building there?
I mean, right now, we're, I mean, the water's there. We're all in it together. I mean, that's what it is right now. We're, we're all miserable together, the four of us.
Well, that's not answering my question. I said, where would the water go if the building wasn't there and the water just came down?
The water, I mean, the water now, well, that fifteen hundred square feet that would be built on would still be able to absorb water. Where you put a building on it, it won't be able to absorb water there because they won't have access to that. And then now there's that. But I, you know, when with the project coming down the street, I'm trying to run all my gutters off my buildings and your house out the street.
You're too long. You'd never be able to do it with the pitch and everything. I assure you, me and my wife have built four houses since we married thirty five years. We've built four houses. This is the first house that we bought and that's because of COVID.
I mean, we're we're in it together right now. And I'm not saying that John, this isn't that John's being spiteful enough because it's not. He's not. He's a very, he's a very pleasant neighbor in all respects. But when you, you know, you're, it just creates now a compounding issue that we're already dealing with and with with low properties. I mean, unless I, you know, unless I start getting, you know, dump truck upon dump truck upon dump truck of dirt to elevate mine up to help absorb more water back there. But, you know, I've got septic back there, so that's really not an option to be running trucks on. You know, I mean, and that's just not a realistic, realistic thing to do. And I, you know, and I'm not trying to do that. But we're just, we're in a, it's a tough situation. I mean, I I mean, the simple solution, you know, I look at it. You know, we we had talked before and it wouldn't have worked that, as I found out last year, my my leach fields ran too far back anyway. So we're talking about buying the back end of my property, which is no ax, no, no direct access. But it would be would work off of their property because it we were joined all the way to the back. But it never came to fruition. But then I also have leach fields that kind of extend back too far to do that, which would have alleviated a lot of problems. And we still have water, but it would also have a lot more ground to cover, so.
Well, it's it to me, it sounds like it, there's an issue here with this low line property. I'm not an engineer, so I could not really give you any kind of an answer on how to go about fixing it. So I guess we, first of the board, you want to take a vote to? Or you want to, do you think we should just table this and we find out a little more?
I think we should vote on the building itself. The water issue is, I think, right about beyond the scope of what we're doing.
Okay.
And we're we're dealing with the code.
Okay, okay. All right, then I make a motion that we take a vote with regards to the size of the building.
I'll second that.
Mary Ann? Rick?
No.
Linda?
No.
Jack?
Yes.
Terry?
Uh, no. Hey, I'm I'm sorry for the situation and everything, but the request has been denied at this point. If at some point you could come up with a solution for the water issue of not running it on to somebody else's property or building up there, we'd be happy to, you know.
So what if I put up a garage that was on, that was the eight hundred and thirty two square feet there? That might be a problem then?
No, no, no. Because you're you're building it to code. Yeah, so you're you're asking for this variance, which to allow you to build bigger than what the code is actually calling for. But yeah, if you used to put that up, no, you're you're within the code regulations. So it would be not a problem.
So like a twenty by forty something that was maybe even twenty by forty two or something?
That would, yeah, meet those.
As long as it was under eight hundred and thirty two square feet.
Yes. Yes, or you could be up to that, too.
Yes.
Yes. So. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for coming in. Sorry that it didn't pan out the way that you would have liked it to.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, okay. Okay, at this point, if there's no further business to discuss, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, Rick?
To adjourn, yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.